Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Torrington Board of Education at 5:31 PM. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, it's there above the door. Thank you. Ellen, when you are ready, you may call the roll.
Mr. Berger.
Here.
Ms. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Cory.
Here.
Mr. Cronin. Mr. Pretis.
Here.
Mr. Uplito. Ms. Hona here. Mr. Kisco. Mr. Knight. Mr. Putnam.
Here.
Your Carbone representative. Ms. Dr. Baker. Ms. Ferguson. Ms. Labby. Mr. Pagola. Ms. Schulte. Ms. Vians. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Thank you. Next, the approval of the agenda. I have two additions I would be seeking, and I believe Mr. Berger has one. So I'd be seeking an approval of the agenda with an amendment for a possible executive session regarding a discussion and possible action on a personnel contract, and possible executive session regarding a discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding with the T E A. Glenn, you had an amendment you would be seeking as well.
I'd want to discuss contracts, specifically snowplowing.
Okay, so the snowplowing contract as well. So if everyone is okay with this ordering, we would order this as eight G seven being the snowplow contract, and then we can just do both the executive sessions as eight and nine afterwards. So I would hear a motion to that effect if there is one. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set. We now have school, community service, and public participation. Is there anyone signed up? There, okay. So let me read out the paragraph. "The Board invites members of the community to speak on topics to be addressed in the agenda or on other topics of interest. Individuals wishing to make comments are requested to fill out the speaker's sign-up sheet, including your name and address, which must be stated at the beginning of your comment. The Board will not allow comments regarding specific staff members, parents, students, or personal grievances. Courtesy is expected in this limited public forum. The participating time will be limited to three minutes per person and ten minutes overall." I, first up, I think it's two people together. So I have Nathan Pepler and Alanis Ortiz.
Good evening, my name is Nathan Pepler.
And mine is Alanis Ortiz.
And we are both seniors here at Torrington High School. We come before you tonight with concerns regarding the newly instated policies on the new building. These policies include no wall decor of any type, no decor, posters, or items of any sort, and outward-facing windows, a ban on any tape-hanging items except for painter's tape, and the requirement of each piece of media to receive an approved by Torrington High School stamp. These policies have had quite a few negative effects on the student body. We wish to address the major decline in school spirit that accompanied the move to the new school. Each of the aforementioned policies has made it increasingly difficult for usual activity to proceed at THS as it once did. Much of our usual, much of our school spirit came from the character of the school, including posters for upcoming events, decorations in both the hallways and teachers' classrooms, the murals on the walls, and other media directly related to school spirit, such as the large school spirit thermometers that were present in the cafeteria at the old school.
Each of these key pieces at THS spirit have been targeted and made nearly impossible to continue. As members of multiple clubs and honor societies, we have both experienced firsthand how difficult the situation is and how little outside support we have received when we have attempted to make these issues known. We have had posters and other media that we have attempted to make, that we have worked on, hard on, sorry, removed, and have been spoken to in a very negative manner solely over the fact that we are decorating or bringing school spirit to the new building. This has been incredibly demotivating and stressful for all of our student organizations as nearly every conversation regarding putting up decorations or posters results in a large problem. To provide specific examples of this, we would like to speak about our experience as members of the Student Council. I'm the Executive Secretary.
And I'm the Senior Vice President.
And this means that many of the events that occur every single year are our responsibility to plan and execute. The new policies have made these processes incredibly difficult, tiring, and altogether taken the joy out of them. As we worked hard to plan homecoming, numerous challenges have risen that simply would have never occurred before the new policies. From having to get each advertisement poster individually stamped with approval before being put up, which reduces the amount of notice given to the student body as well as creating an extra step and more stress for us, to having to follow incredibly strict decoration guidelines regarding a night that is supposed to be a fun and exciting night for students. These guidelines have had our entire group stressed as we fear that an accident will breach a policy may result in stricter rules that entirely ban decoration or school spirit. These policies have also affected our abilities to plan pep rallies. As our first pep rally of the year approaches, we have begun facing difficulties regarding preservation of the gym floor, throwing a wrench in our usual activities. Since moving here, it has become increasingly difficult to progress the year in any usual way.
Through our work in these positions, many of our peers come to us with questions and concerns regarding anything going on at the school. We both confidently say that we have had multiple students approach us to discuss the lack of decoration, inability to display student work or art, and overall empty feeling of the blank white walls. In their words, "The new school has been described as a hospital, an office building, and an institution. A school should be a home where students feel raider pride in every classroom and hallway." We, as a student body, feel frustrated and defeated, as well as unseen when it comes to this issue. To us, we feel that the building has taken priority over the students themselves. This building was built for us, the student body, to utilize it to the best of our abilities in order to uplift and strengthen our education and experiences. These policies have hampered our ability to do so. We are not here to criticize the Board in any means. We just ask that you consider what we are saying and how the student body is feeling, as well as request significant change to provide us the ability to give this atmosphere to our peers. Thank you, esteemed Board members, for your continued support and work for Torrington Public Schools.
Thank you. And customarily, it is not the policy of the Board to respond directly to comments. So I only say this because I expect that many people will leave before we get to this point of the agenda. But the administration has heard you and does intend to speak with us a little bit about addressing this. And it'll probably be an ongoing process. But just because I assume that this room will be mostly empty by the time we get to that part of our agenda, I wanted you to know that. Thank you. I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else here in the room who would care to address the Board? Okay, I do have one written-in item that I have been asked to read into the record. And I will preface it by saying, in case anyone doesn't know, that our dear friend and secretary Ellen Hona is leaving the Board of Education this year after sixteen years of service. So this is the letter. "Hi, my name is Carrie Hona and I live at 603 New Harwinton Road. Tonight, we recognize someone whose quiet persistence and tireless commitment have shaped the future of education in Torrington. My mother-in-law, Ellen Hona. Her son Chris and I are so sorry that we are out of the country and not able to be there to honor her. In true Ellen fashion, her journey to this role began with humility and a bit of humor. Years ago, when I asked her to run as a candidate for the Working Families Party, just to get one percent of the vote, she said, 'I don't want to do that. I want to run for the Board of Ed.' And I said, 'No one wants to be on the Board of Ed,' but Ellen did because she saw the value in service, in showing up, listening, and making a difference. For sixteen years, Ellen has served on the Torrington Board of Education, most of that time as its secretary. She's been there for every big decision, every late-night meeting, and every moment that required grace under pressure. During her tenure, Ellen has helped oversee the building of a historic new high school and middle school campus, the merging of our schools into a sister-school model, and then into an elementary-intermediate model, and the difficult and emotionally-charged closure of two elementary schools. She's also helped steer our district through a global pandemic that demanded quick thinking and endless flexibility, all while working a full-time job, caring for elderly family members, and helping erase her grandchildren. If you've ever attended a meeting, you know Ellen has been to all the subcommittee meetings too. The ones that go long, the ones that get tense, and the ones where the real work gets done. Through it all, often to my chagrin, she has never made her service political. Ellen has always insisted that the focus stay on what truly matters, the students and their academics. Her belief in working across differences and keeping the mission clear has been a model for how local government should function. Tonight, we thank Ellen for sixteen years of steadfast service. We thank her for her wisdom, her work ethic, and her unwavering dedication to the children and families of Torrington. She leaves behind a legacy, not just of new buildings and bold decisions, but of integrity, compassion, and commitment to what truly matters." We will have nice things to say about Ellen at the appropriate time, but I wanted to read in Carrie's words to our record. So with that, a little bit of a rough transition here, we'll get back to work, and we have recognitions.
"The extent of his own potential. Through hands-on scientific inquiry, he discovered not only a passion for science, but a confidence in his ability to excel in challenging college-level work. That success led to him to UConn Biology and Molecular Biology, where his teacher described him as one of the hardest-working students they have ever taught. Thoughtful, diligent, and consistently ahead of schedule. But what truly sets Jaden apart is his character. He brings positivity to every classroom, supports his peers, and leads by example. His participation in the ECMC scholarship cohort highlights his growing academic excellence and his commitment to continuous improvement. Jaden's achievements extend well beyond science. Within our school newspaper, The Raider Report, Jaden began as a quiet contributor who planned to focus on photography. Over time, he found his voice as a writer and a journalist, and today serves as the news editor, one of the paper's highest positions. He approaches journalism with the same drive and integrity he shows the classroom, researching deeply, interviewing thoughtfully, and even contacting state officials to verify his stories. His peers call him the hardest worker in class, and his advisor calls him a true journalist. Having been the subject of a few of his interviews, I'll tell you, he asks the hard-hitting questions, and he keeps on persevering till he gets his answers. From the lab to the newsroom, Jaden's growth represents the best of Torrington High School students who take every opportunity to push through challenge and do everything with a heart and purpose. Graduating with four completed UConn ECE courses and a record of leadership, kindness, and perseverance, Jaden stands as a powerful example of what it means to do well in every sense of those words and our motto. We are honored to recognize Jaden Rodriguez this evening for his remarkable journey and his embodiment of the true spirit of Torrington High School. In speaking not only as Torrington High School's principal, but also Jaden's middle school principal, I will tell you that he is a clear example of what a student can achieve."
You got... Good evening, everyone. As we start the year, we always start off setting a baseline, and we do the STAR test. And it's important for us to take the time to recognize amazing achievement. And I wanted to make sure I celebrated these students and their families in front of the Board of Education tonight. When we looked at scores, we always look at trends and we look at data, but it's important to recognize that individual standouts. The students you see before you are in the top ninety-ninth percentile of the nation who take this test. It's an amazing accomplishment. It's an amazing platform. It's an amazing bar to set for those students who take the STAR test. And I wanted to make sure I took the time to celebrate them in front of you all tonight with their families so that they know they are setting the standard for what we expect for students at Torrington Middle School and that they continue to learn and grow and are excited to move forward. We're going to call this the Rising Star Awards because this is what we believe you are, and this is what we want to continue to see you do. So I will introduce them to you, but thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate you. We acknowledge your hard work. We want you to continue to do so, and we expect great things from you. Brody Sullivan. Lam Koo. Parker Sanderson Sletner. And Jesse Joakim. We stuck with only four students. We did not select all the students that achieved this, but these are our top achieving students in seventh grade and eighth grade on each of the tests that we took this year. Thank you all very much.
All right, unfortunately, the student that I'm recognizing tonight could not make it. But it is my pleasure to take a moment tonight to recognize an outstanding student from Fast Academy, our October Student of the Month, Peyton Storrs. Peyton has truly begun to find her voice here at Fast Academy. She is learning to advocate for herself, take ownership in her learning, and speak up with confidence, all of which are incredible steps in her personal growth. Her progress this year has been nothing short of impressive. She currently holds a perfect attendance, which marks a huge improvement, and her academic performance is equally as strong as she's earning outstanding grades and has reached Blue Level, which is the highest level and a student can achieve as of this point in the year in our Points and Behavior System at Fast Academy. Beyond the numbers, Peyton stands out for her kindness, respectfulness, and commitment to doing the right thing, even when no one is watching. She sets a quiet but powerful example for others in the building, and we couldn't be more proud of the success that Peyton has found at Fast Academy so far. So thank you.
Good evening. It's my honor to introduce our Southwest Superintendent Award winner this month, Haley Kachimbo. She's a little shy, so I told her she didn't have to talk, but she can smile. There you go. Haley's a third grader at Southwest. Her teacher, Mrs. Markalon there, recommended her for this award because of all of the great things that she has been doing already. First, she lives by our school motto, which is care for yourself and care for others. Every day, she shows kindness, responsibility, a genuine desire to help those around her, whether she's lending a hand to a classmate, helping her teacher in room 305. She does it all with a calm, gentle spirit that brightens all of our school community. At the start of the school year, she was a little bit shy, and maybe a little bit tonight too. So she was careful not to draw attention to herself, stayed in the background. But over the past just seven weeks, she's really come out of her shell, made a great transformation, raises her hand in class more often, shares her ideas, takes risks. And she's discovering that every contribution matters, right, wrong, or somewhere in between. She welcomes feedback with grace and maturity beyond her years. And she's now, watching her grow and competence has been nothing short of inspiring. She reminds us what learning and courage look like when paired with kindness and perseverance. We're very proud of her and for the person that she is growing into, and we are grateful to her family for being such strong partners in her education. So please join me in congratulating Haley, our Southwest School Superintendent Award winner for October 2025.
Okay, congratulations to everyone recognized. I'm always blown away by our students' success and their achievements from the elementary level to the high school level. My favorite part of the meeting, I have to say. But my second favorite part is hearing from our student representatives. Your microphone has been stolen from you, but whenever you're ready.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Nate Pepler.
And my name is Xavier Vega.
And we will be your student presenters tonight. Here are some exciting updates and highlights from Torrington High School this month. We're thrilled to welcome Chef Tom, our new culinary teacher here at THS. He brings real-world experience, creativity, and hands-on approaches that students are really enjoying. Recently, Chef Tom's classes made empanadas from scratch, learning about the cultural background of the dish, practicing kitchen safety, and building skills in dough preparation and their cooking techniques. The results were delicious, and the students are already looking forward to their next culinary adventure.
Our Child Development II students kicked off the semester by visiting the pre-K classroom to introduce themselves and begin building relationships with the young learners. They join the children in imaginary play and help spark creativity and social interaction. This hands-on experience helps the pre-K students grow while also giving our high schoolers valuable insight into early childhood education.
In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the THS Interact Club organized a Pink Rose fundraiser. Members made and sold pink ribbons, pink ribbon pins, to raise money for the Pink Rose Fund at Charlotte Hungerford Hospital. Funds help provide breast cancer screenings and services for those who are uninsured or underinsured. The club's work is a great example of students using their time and talents to give back to the local community.
Select members of our THS orchestra participated in ASTA Day at the Hart School of Music, University of Hartford. Students rehearsed under the direction of Regulo Stabilito and worked alongside peers from over ten other districts. The day included sectional rehearsals, a performance by professional string quartet, a campus tour, and a collaborative concert. It was a powerful and inspiring experience for our student musicians. Lastly, we would like to invite all of you to our upcoming theatrical production, The Balmody of Errors, on November thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth at 7:00 PM. I am the Assistant Director.
And I'm the Assistant Stage Manager.
This production puts our actors to the test with hip-hop-style music and dance unlike anything they've done before.
Our crew is hard at work making sure everything behind the scenes is perfect just in time for opening night. We hope to see you there. Thank you for your attention, and that concludes our Torrington High School Board Report.
Fabulous. Thank you. And as I always say, if either of you have a passion for municipal government, feel free to stay. But otherwise, by no means should you feel obligated. Okay, so we have next the superintendent's report. Take it away, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. On behalf of all the students and staff here in Torrington, I would like to publicly recognize and thank Ellen Hona and Sudah Pretis for their many years of service and dedication to Torrington Public Schools while serving as a Board member. The job of a Board member is never easy, and it's definitely one of the hardest jobs that anyone could do. Their dedication to our students and to our staff has been very much appreciated, and is every member of the team. They certainly will be missed. While they've been on the Board, we have redistricted twice, built a beautiful new campus as we're sitting here this evening, adopted new, strong policies, opened Fast Academy, which is, as you heard this evening, really paying off for our students, and all the countless other things and the countless hours and the time spent. It does not go unnoticed. So thank you. Both of these Board members have a lot of accomplishments to be proud of, and we will definitely miss them and wish them all of the best in whatever it is they decide to do. Thank you. It was great to see our football team play their first game back on October tenth. The crowd was large, amazing, and cheering, not only for our football players, but for our cheerleaders and our band. And I can tell you, our cheer team did a wonderful job. I was sitting behind a Board member mom of a cheer member, and I could tell you, it was definitely a ruckus crowd for the cheer squad and for the band as well. But the football team did extremely well. As Mr. Scott and I discussed, one more point and it would have been a different football game. But he's had to talk with the coaches about that, so... But it was a great overall experience to be back here on the home field in Torrington. It was amazing. I'm very proud of how well all of our student athletes have done and performed on and off the field this fall. I've said numerous times, the word "student" comes first, but there's a ton of work and dedication that goes into playing football, volleyball, cheer, band, whatever the case may be, play, as you've heard this evening. So very proud of them and very proud of their hard work. Mrs. Ferguson and I have continued to be visible, as well as all of the cabinet members, Mrs. Ferguson and I have continued to be visible, as well as all of the cabinet members and all of the buildings this past month, and we will continue to visit all the buildings in order to witness all of the great things taking place within our schools. Our students are amazing. You've heard us say that numerous times. We always look forward to seeing our friends in the classroom, on the field, or wherever. And on a happy note, we are looking forward to seeing our friends dress up as their favorite book characters for Halloween, so that'll be a fun time as well. So, real positive, thank you, Sue, thank you, Ellen, we will miss you. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the superintendent regarding his report? None. We next have the Human Resources Report. Take it away, Kim.
I have the report in your packet, and so, first of all, you have typically our vacancies. So you see the vacancies that we have currently. I did, took the liberty of comparing to kind of where we were at this time last year, and that's in line with where we were last year. All the administrators for those positions are actively interviewing, and we actually will have recommendations for several of these positions by the end of the week. So we're anxiously looking to fill those positions. What the exciting news is, though, is our substitute fill rates and our absences. So you can see the substitute fill rates. For the teachers, we ended the month at 90%. I can honestly say, in my eight years in Torrington, we've never been at 90%. Even at our best, in my first year here, we were in the mid-80s. So 90% is really a huge, huge improvement. And even 76% with the paras, you know, our average has been 40s and 50s over the last eight years. So 76% is a huge, huge improvement. So incredible kudos to ESS. I have been actively communicating with them and sharing that we are pleased with what they're doing and that they need to keep it up. So we've had daily communication with them. If you skip to the second page before I address the absences, I just wanted to point out that the, where we talk about the percent of the jobs filled by Torrington Public School staff versus ESS staff, you can see that that increase in the substitute fill rates is attributed to the work ESS is doing because those numbers have actually gone down 10% from what they were last year, as far as the percentage that was filled by TPS staff. So more of the jobs are being filled by ESS staff. So our retirees are still actively working. We love them, they're doing great work, but ESS has definitely stepped up their game, and we're pleased with the progress so far. So back to the first page, you can also see absences are actually significantly improved. So our teachers ended the year at four point, ended the month at 4.4%, which is about in line with where we were last month, but the paras actually are almost 2% less than where we were at this time last year. So that's a significant improvement. So we're happy about that. And we had about the same number of people that got the perfect attendance award this month that got it last year. So we also are seeing a steady consistency with that, so we're excited about that. Turnover rates, it's a little early in the season, but you can see where our turnover rates are, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Anyone have questions? I know what Mr. Putnam wants to talk about. Were you about to say something? Excellent. You're up.
Just a quick one, Kim. Is this actually, do we have a higher number of people filling these positions, or is the improvement to 90% just because we had such a much lower attendance, lack of attendance, I should say, anybody who was out and absentee?
Well, so our teacher absenteeism is actually 2%, 0.2% higher than it was at this time last year. So it was 4.2% last year, and it's 4.4 this year, so which is a minuscule amount difference.
Right.
So it's really the same as it was last year, but we're at 90% fill rate. So the absences are consistent, but the fills are just higher.
So ESS is providing more people then than we've ever seen before, which would be a good thing.
Correct. Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
You had said that you're happy with the quality of the product. Are you saying that the, what we're being, the people being sent are, live up to your standards and your needs?
Yeah, I mean, the feedback has been good. There have certainly been incidents, but, you know, I will tell you that when the, their incident reporting protocol is actually quite easy, and when the school administration has reported an incident, the ESS team handles it very promptly and efficiently. So, so in the instances where it's not, it is handled quickly.
Great. Anyone else? Great. Thank you. I will say, anytime you hire a large volume of people, especially through an agency, there's just always going to be infill that don't work out, but it sounds like everybody on the administrative side is happy with how things are going, and I am also really excited about a 90% fill rate. See, I thought where Mr. Putnam was going was, was going to end up being the answer, that everyone was hustling for their intended attendance incentive, which is fine, that's how it's intended to work, but it's really, it's really exciting that, you know, maybe that's true, but also ESS is able to fill more jobs.
There's a little of both.
Right.
But, but the numbers to last year are consistent, but our fill rates are significantly higher, so I think, I think there's a little bit of both.
Excellent. Okay, you are off the hook. Are we calling this special ed report? Special ed report. Dr. Baker, take it away.
Thank you, and good evening. The numbers that I'm reporting this evening from the Special Education Department are from our October 1 numbers. We're remaining steady at this point in terms of all of the numbers across the board. Our overall numbers were up by 12 students due to the fact that it's the beginning of the school year and people are moving in. Our in-district numbers are only up by four students. Our prevalence rate has remained within the same percentage. It's up by 0.1%, but it's still within the same rate. The in-district pre-K students, we took on six new students. In district age 18 to 22, our Transition Academy has remained exactly the same number of students. Our outplacement for 18 to 22-year-olds was an increase by one student. Our currently outplaced by PPT overall is down by three students. Our agency placed through DCF or court has remained exactly the same. Our magnet parent choice and our Voag schools were up by four students, and our overall 504 plans have only increased by seven students. In all, we've remained at a steady pace, and we're pleased with what we're seeing in our department. Thank you.
Fabulous. Am I wrong to think that for a beginning-of-the-year bump in sped numbers, this is actually really mild?
It is, yes.
Okay, that's a good sign. Does anyone have any questions related to this? Okay, I actually have something, I brought this up a few months ago, and I think it kind of jointly belongs to Student Services and Human Resources about the, you know, frequency or what have you of employees being injured in incidents that involve students. So I just kind of want to raise that again, because I know that everyone loves when the board asks them to do more work, but I do think it's relevant. You know, I see a lot of, for example, teacher and peer educator contracts in my work, and, you know, there's a lot of concern around the state about people getting injured in schools related to student behavior, either within or without special education involvement, which is why I say I think it kind of jointly belongs to your departments. So even just a cursory review of those numbers, it's been raised to me a few times, and I think it's important for the board to know who's getting hurt, who works for us, and whether there are patterns that we can affect with policy changes, investments, and things like that, because if we can reduce that number as close to zero as possible, I think we would all prefer that. Okay, that's all I have about that. It is Office of Teaching and Learning Report. Ms. Ferguson.
Joanne Creedon is going to report on the updates for MLs. Thank you, Joanne.
Turn it on. Happy to be here, happy to be able to share on behalf of our wonderful EL students and staff and families. And so my update is brief, but I always have to add a little bit of extra context for the sake of building understanding of board members and, of course, all those folks in TV land, right? So there's, there's better understanding. So English learners and multilingual learners, the terms are basically used interchangeably. Traditionally, we've been calling our kids ELs, English learners. MLs was adopted a few years ago as more comprehensive because in many cases, our kids are learning, in fact, more than two languages. Some have three languages or more. Next slide, please. So this shows the growth of our English learners over the past couple of years here in Torrington Public Schools, and there has been a steady increase, as you can see. And as of today, we have about 17% of all students in the district are English learners. Next slide, please. This is October data, and it just breaks it down by school, so you can see where they are. Next slide. This always is the slide, these, this slide is always probably the most interesting to folks, the many different languages that our students represent. So for our English learners, we have 20 different languages, and it's no surprise that Spanish is by far the number one home language, native language. But Arabic, Urdu, and Bengali are the next three. And just for fun, I'm going to just quickly read through those 20 because I think it's quite, quite amazing and quite wonderful that our community has such richness of linguistic diversity here. So it's Arabic, Urdu, Bengali, Portuguese, Khmer, which is Cambodian, Creole, Haitian, Albanian, Lao, Mandarin, Fulani, Vietnamese, Creole English, French, Hungarian, Kici, which is one of the indigenous languages of Guatemala, Malay, Punjabi, Tagalog, and Zulu. So those are 20 of the home languages of our English learners, and in all Torrington Public Schools, not just ELs, there's 37 different home languages represented. But of course, not every student who has a different language at home needs or requires English learner services, or they might have had it, but then are no longer in our, in our catch. Next slide, please. In Torrington Public Schools, we embrace and celebrate multilingualism in our students and families. We know that being multilingual matters, both for individual and for society, and in addition to the cognitive benefits, we know that speaking multiple languages expands our worldview. It connects us to our own identity and links us to our communities, our cultures, and our families. As you know, because the board has been very supportive of the Seal of Bilinguality efforts that we've been doing for the past four years, where we have been connecting with the World Language Department, and we have awarded now the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality to 104 graduating seniors in the past four years. So that's, that's pretty amazing, in 11 different languages. So obviously, yes, the Spanish and Italian that are taught in our high school, but also Albanian, Bengali, Bosnian, Fulani, Italian, I said, Polish, Portuguese, Russian, and Vietnamese, which is a tribute to the heritage languages and the fact that so many families are trying to keep their heritage language alive. Next slide, please. So in the past few years, we have welcomed students from around the globe, and this year, for obvious reasons, we have had a small number of brand-new arrivals to our, coming directly to us, but many of our newly registered EL students have spent, had spent a short time in other districts in Connecticut or in other states. So they might have come directly from Dominican Republic to New Jersey or to the city and then are now joining us. Next slide, please. Who are our ELs, MLs? There's no single profile, right? There's no single story. Each one is unique. We have newcomers. We have long-term ELs who haven't achieved proficiency yet. And at the secondary level especially, we have students that come in with a really strong academic preparation or program in their own country, and some who have had very limited or interrupted formal education. And some of our students are also students with IEPs. Next slide, please. Our EL programs and services are all according to the Connecticut State Department of Education guidelines. So we have mandated standardized procedures for identification, the types of programs we offer. We must give annual parental notification and consent for services. We use an annual standardized assessment, their standardized mastery criteria, and we monitor for two years after exit. Next slide, please. We're frequently asked about bilingual programming, and there are different models, but here in Torrington, we use a transitional bilingual program, which means that we're providing academic and language support as needed in Spanish while simultaneously building our students' proficiency in English. Increasing amounts of English, decreasing amounts of Spanish. And, you know, again, just sort of a informational piece, so we have a Spanish bilingual program, but Danbury has a Portuguese bilingual program, New Britain has Arabic, Norwich and Stanford have Haitian Creole. So whenever we have 20 students or more of one language group who are English learners, we are mandated to provide a bilingual program in that language. Next slide, please. So our department goals are ongoing, and board members, if you've really paid attention, you might see that, yeah, Joanne, you presented these department goals before, because they are ongoing, because we are continuing to work on building the knowledge and capacity of all teachers to be effective teachers of our English learners. And we are creating a K-12 Continuum of Language Instruction and Support Services. And we are always trying to foster our connections between our, and among our EL families, our schools, and the community, and of course, to increase opportunities for multilingualism. Next slide, please. The accountability measure that we use, we have no choice, it's the state mandated Los Links. It's required both by the feds and the state. It assesses listening, speaking, reading, and writing, scores from one to five, one beginner, two, early intermediate, and so forth, up to five above proficient. The mastery criteria, when does a student leave our program? And they have to have an overall proficient plus a four or five in both reading and writing. And the state developed a growth model, which I'm going to show you in a moment. Next slide, please. Last year, we were really excited by the number of our students and the percentage of our students who met mastery. We had 62 students in our district, which is quite wonderful. This was an increase from past years, and as you can see by the graph on the right, it's mostly in those middle, middle grades. A student who comes to us, the research says four to seven years is what it takes for a student to become academically proficient or to be on the same level as their peers. And so we can see that when you look at where that mastery occurs. I do have to point out that the success at the middle grades was really the result of a concerted effort by our four or five schools last year, and especially TMS. Those teachers did a great job. Next slide, please. So this is our growth rate data, and it's, the growth rate is determined by a composite of listening and speaking, which gives us an oral score, and then the reading and writing composite gives us the literacy score. And we did above the state average in both areas, and we also surpassed our previous year's growth rate, both growth rate and average percentage of target achieved. So that was really good news. Family engagement efforts, next, oh, sorry, next slide, please. This is such an important aspect of what we do because we need our families to be connected and feel like they are in fact part of our school communities. So it starts even in pre-K and then continues. Our elementary schools do a great job with their family literacy nights, and we work really hard. And last year, Vogel and Torrington both had beautiful events that there was a conscious effort to get our Spanish-speaking families, especially... effort to get our Spanish-speaking families especially to come, and the turnout was, was And so with our families, though, you saw all those other languages. So we do try to utilize our, our interpreter and translating service so that we can connect with our Portuguese families and our Urdu-speaking families or Arabic-speaking families. Next slide, please. Success for our E Ls, well, like success for all students, right? Establish and maintain a relationship with students and their families. To embrace and celebrate the assets our M Ls bring. You know, I think it's really important just to always remind ourselves that when a student comes brand-new to us, it's not like that's an empty vessel. That child brings so much of their own linguistic and, and family and cultural experiences. So we want to celebrate the assets. To embrace and celebrate bilingualism, to provide comprehensible input, lots of opportunities for oral language and student discourse, to make sure that we're integrating literacy and content, and to work really hard to integrate students into all aspects of school and community life. And now, especially now, we need to continue our ongoing efforts in every school at creating a school climate where every student feels welcome, safe, and supported. Next slide, please. Thank you to our E L teachers, thank you to our E L support staff, tutors, translators, and parists. And as I gave a shout-out before to the middle school staff, thank you to all T P S educators because it's actually every classroom teacher, every interventionist, everyone who works with our students who deserves the thanks. And next slide is a thank you to the board. Thank you, Board of Ed, for your ongoing support. All of our students are all of our students, and we have one vision, we are one team, and we care about every student. And thank you. And I want to do, say a special thank you to Ellen and to Sue for your, for your years of service and for your support for our kids, all our kids.
Thank you. Does anyone have, Gary?
Just a simple question, they're working now. Where do you get the interpreters or the, for the kids, other than the Spanish-speaking and maybe the Portuguese, how do you find them? I know a friend of mine's wife who speaks Arabic was helping out with Arabic, but how do you find the rest of the, the teachers, the interpreters?
Well, we use, we use a service.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah, just like the hospitals do. Yeah. But we have, we have tapped, we have identified. So in our school, we have some people who are bilingual in Albanian and Portuguese, and so sometimes we can tap our Mandarin. For parent-teacher conferences, we tap a Mandarin speaker, so. Zulu, that, that would be a tough one, right? That, that's where, that's where an interpreting service really pays off. Any other questions?
Oh, Jeff.
Thank you, Joanne. It's no secret, you know, that I love your presentations. You have always keep bringing the most interesting information to the table, excuse me. My question is, when somebody reaches mastery in the E L program, they have to get that four or five, and that's probably no simple task. Out of curiosity, do we have a feel for what percentage of our non-E L, E L students could get that score?
I have often wondered that, and I have thought, wouldn't it be interesting to give this test to just a group of our fourth graders or eighth graders? But I don't, because I can't.
No, but I'm, I'm with you.
But it is, it is, you know, it's, it's not an easy test, and especially that literacy piece, that really sometimes holds people, people for quite a, quite a while.
And you could take that even further down the road. I mean, if you started to look at test scores at some point in your Office of Teaching and Learning, I know they have to take the test a certain number of years before they account in our growth rates. I learned that in our last school improvement meeting. But as the growth in number of people who are E L students goes up, and the number of people who are, you know, kind of making it through the program and exiting the program, which is a great thing, how does that overall impact our scores? I mean, you have a larger population who we are doing translation for and trying to build their English skills, how does that affect our test scores as a district overall?
So are you asking about the long-term?
Over the long term, what have you, what have we seen? I mean, you've been doing this for four years, and you collect amazing amounts of data, so I have a feeling you have an inkling on this one, maybe not one that you've researched fully, but as we have an increasing number of E L students, have our, and our test scores have gone up, which is, you know, amazing, but are they at all related? I mean, do we have a feel for, is the additional programming really making this big, large jump for us in your program?
I don't believe that our students could be successful without the supports and the instruction that we give in this program. I don't have an answer at my fingertips. I will get the answer for your next meeting.
Yeah, no rush. It was just.
You know, to, to get that, to be that level of proficiency, those kids are really, at that point, operating on, on the even playing field as their peers. And so those numbers are then funneling into.
No small feat for anybody in the crowd, right? I only know an, an extra language, Spanish, from when I was in high school in this, well, the building that used to be over there, but I cannot imagine going through that process and becoming proficient enough in just the short number of years that somebody joins us for, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good question, Mr. Pedden.
I, I have a quick one, well, hopefully quick, but do you have a sense? So I'm looking at this, and I see Arab, Arabic-speaking, English-language learning students are about 2%. So I'm just ballparking, that's probably 13, 14 of them. So that, as I recall, was not the number-two language for us a couple of years ago. So as we creep closer to 20 of these students, at which point we have to create a program for them, I'm wondering, like, what's the, both the financial investment required, but also can, like, are there people out there in this region who teach mathematics in Arabic that we can find, or will this cause some kind of significant problem?
That's when I tap Kim, and I say, Kim, we need an Arabic-speaking bilingual math No, I mean, it really is a challenge. I mean, we're even, it's, I don't think it's a secret to, or any surprise, that we have difficulty filling the Spanish bilingual certified positions that we need. So yes, that would be a challenge. I mean, right now, we, we manage to find an Arabic-speaking tutor who works with many of our kids a couple of days a week. And the other thing is that the state doesn't exactly say, like, you're supposed to have a certified teacher. But sometimes a certified teacher can work under the supervision of perhaps a T cell certified teacher could have Arabic-speaking tutors underneath them.
Okay, so there are, there are ways to at least start teaching these students.
Yes.
You know, a structured program.
If we need Arabic, bilingual, I'm on it.
Obviously, we're teaching them now, but, okay, great. Last column. Okay. I think you're off the hook. Thank you. Did you have more for your office, or was that the sum? Fabulous. We.
Joanne?
Yes, thank you. We have liaison reports, the board has received them. I don't know that we, did we get one from everybody? Does anybody have anything? If you're an administrator, now is the time, if you want to add anything to, at your school. Okay. We have the monthly financials next. Let me dig to them. The Budget Committee, I assume, has discussed these. But Donna, did you want to add anything?
Everybody received the budget packet for, till the end of, oh, thank you, sorry. Good evening. Everybody received the budget packet for the end of September, and we're tracking very well. We're a quarter of the way through the fiscal year and about 22% through the budget with encumbrances. We did go over specific line items at our Budget Committee meeting, and just two that are highlighted, if you weren't there, was the benefits. Just want to reassure everybody that there will be money coming in from employee contributions and grants, so that line item will be pretty much level. And also, we did adopt the budget based on the previous configuration of the schools. So in the line 100s, there was a little movement with staff and funding, and that's what we went over in detail at our Budget Committee meeting. But other than that, everything is looking good.
Okay. Actually, I see an estimate, an estimated balance slightly in the negative for workers' compensation. I, can we actually game out the year's worth of workers' comp?
Yes, we can dig into those numbers deeper.
No, I mean, I'm not asking you to do that, I'm just, you know, should we be assuming that we're going to come in a little negative there, or is that just sort of a, a number that the, we're guestimating based on past trends?
The second, the latter.
Okay, cool, that's fine, then it doesn't worry me at all. Anyone have any other questions? Great, I would hear a motion then to approve the monthly financials, if there's one. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Those are approved. Committee reports, Mr. Kisco, tell us about school improvement.
School improvement. Our meeting in October featured a discussion, a further discussion of the Fast Academy's Work Credit Program. That comes up later in the agenda, so we'll be discussing that. We had a chance to ask questions about the state test results that we had been given earlier, and there is, again, more material in your packet for that, thanks to Mrs. Ferguson. Our self-evaluation process, we discussed, and in fact, we got something in the board emails this past week. I would like the information that's solicited there, not so much the goals, we can wait on those, but the information about any input anyone has about the items that we should evaluate ourselves on. I'd like that by Halloween. Before Halloween, I will spend Halloween Day working on that, which I think will be appropriate as I wait for my neighborhood full of children to show up looking for, for candy. We have a meeting coming up in two weeks. We get a week in between this month, the way the calendar works. And we have the early elementary school reports as a part of that meeting. We'll be talking about the Election Day professional development, how that went. And we will be taking a real dive into the self-evaluation process. Not that it's going to be anything hugely different, but we will put some real meat on those bones, and it'll come forward to the board for the November meeting. And we will have a preliminary discussion on the business of unearned first marking period grades, the policy of nobody being able to get less than a 50, even for doing absolutely nothing. Questions?
It would be my great pleasure to vote to eliminate that policy when the time comes. My only question is, are you in fact giving out Halloween candy, or are you going to be hiding from the children?
Oh, no, no, I enjoy Halloween. I have an, I live in a real neighborhood. Sometimes we get a lot of kids, other times we don't. Adults sometimes show up, they don't, they're not looking for candy, but they always get something.
Well, I'll be at your house, John, don't worry.
Right around the corner from you, right?
Does anyone have any questions related to the committee report? Okay, then who's next in the order? Facilities and Technology, Mr. Berger.
Good evening. We had a pretty productive Facilities and Technology meeting last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me. Our first agenda item, we got a presentation from a company, I don't remember the name of the company exactly, about solar on the high school. That was fairly interesting, but I think the superintendent and Dean have asked them to come back to sharpen their pencil for some better numbers. So we had a solar presentation on that. We also talked about our committee meeting locations, which, you know, if the Boy Scouts are still awake back there, you know, if you would like to ever join another committee meeting, not such a big, broad meeting, the budget and facilities is going to stay at a single location instead of bouncing around to different schools, such as SIC and POLICY. We got an update on, on all the projects that Dean is working on with the limited funds he has available this year, and he's doing a fabulous job with that. We talked about the T M S roof bid results. I would much, Donna, I would much rather have you guys give us a slight update on that. I know there's certain emails flying around earlier this week, unless you would like me to summarize that.
I think I'd take a stab at it.
All right.
We did get some bids, they were a little high. We're working with the state to see if we might be able to up our grant, and we're looking at, you know, some of the parameters of the bidders. So hopefully, we'll have more news at our next meeting.
Okay. Anybody has any questions on that, wait till the end. And we also had a, I'm not going to go into depth on this, we have an action item about this tonight, but Dean is going to, we've approved to extend the H V C service contract with our current vendor, and there is an action item about that tonight, and if anybody has any questions, I just ask you to hold them till that time. Technology side, Rachel and her team's doing a great job. We finalized the device protection plan that is closed, we have everything good there. And other than that, that's all we have. Any questions?
You keep doing these long pauses, Glenn. I kept thinking you were done halfway.
No, my brain, my brain's a little slow, Ed, I gotta think.
Before we do questions, Mr. Pagola, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes. Regarding, regarding the, this complex and the signs and flyers and posters that have been kind of regulated a little bit until we have a system down. As you guys can see here, if you haven't seen, this past summer, we put a bunch of additional whiteboards up that are magnetic, that are allowing the students to hang different things up and down the hallways. We're still in the process of putting them in, we got about six more to put in. They're quite, they're actually right on here, those two right there, the ones you can't, there's nothing on them. Yeah, they're up and down the halls. But it's, it's those there that we've installed, probably in the neighborhood of 12 to 18 of them, I think we got 20 total. The other thing we're working on is something for classrooms and in the hallways, where they would be something that would probably be magnetic or like a tack board to put up, and then they will be able to use that to hang stuff up and down the hallways. And it, it has taken a lot of time just to come up with a system that fits the decor here. So it's not as simple as just putting some tack board up, didn't really want to just go that route. We're looking for a little bit more, again, to meet the decor. So I got a couple, a couple companies working on possible metal strips that will go along that would match our, our archways and our trim with this gray that would go along, that would be magnetic, and the students and whoever can hang, you know, the approved signage up. Work with, with Mr. Scott a little bit on here, and he's come up with a plan to vet what, what, you know, student council, whoever else wants to hang, just to make sure it's approved, and we don't have, you know, just a bunch of stuff hanging up and down the hallways, a little bit of a system there. So I apologize, it's taken so long. We, we have moved forward with some of them, you know, but, and we are continuing to move forward, we just haven't gotten there yet completely.
Great. I will say, in regard to the decor, if you will, I think the students are somewhat right that the decor is a little bit institutional. So I, I think that's all really good stuff, and I'm not opposed to it all. I would also like some consideration at some point, and I know this will be a little bit difficult to pull off well, but, you know, one of the things that was also mentioned both times students came to speak with us about this was, like, art, you know, whether it's murals or, you know, things displayed by the students, and some of which is temporary, which can certainly go on the boards, but maybe there's a process where you have an outgoing senior class that would like to paint a wall somewhere or something like that. You know, I know there's expenses that come with those things, there's risks, just something I want, I, I would like everybody to think about, maybe. You know, I think a school can afford to be a little bit whimsical, right? Not everything has to be symmetrical and sterile, and I'm sure there's a way that we can work it out with a minimal expense. It's my only thought on that, but I really do appreciate your efforts, and I think once they are all up and there's stuff on them, I think the students will see them, and they will also appreciate that. I have no other questions. Gary?
Regarding the roofs, or the bids, did you, was it an open bid so far, and was it announced in terms of the?
It was an open bid.
Oh, okay.
But no, it has not, but.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Are you hitting the button down there to talk, Ellen, or are you turning the microphone off? Oh, okay. Great, thank you. And thank you, Dean. We next have the Budget Committee. Tell us about that, Ellen.
As Donna already reported, we're on track, and the audit is in progress, should be finished December. And that's all I have.
Great. Any questions related to budget, Budget Committee, et cetera? No, I know you're all thrilled to get to work on the next No, I know you're all thrilled to get to work on the next budget, starting in December. I know. I'm excited too. Can you tell? All right. We next then have the Building Committee. Who's best for that? Gary, have you been going to those?
I didn't go to the last one. I got a list from Mario, but.
Okay.
There's, reaching the end, there's going to be issues at the end. Everybody, is this working or no? I couldn't get any closer. Couldn't get any closer. There are issues that will always come up at the end of the job, and there are going to be money issues. I don't know that it's been discussed, but at the meetings, there are issues with subcontractors. There are issue with some of the professionals, and they are working on that, and it will be a process that will go on for probably quite a while. But we're still at budget and under budget so far. As to the progress, opening the gym corridor in the gym in the second floor on Friday, all except the weight room, that's coming on Election Day. First floor will be next week, next within two weeks. Outside, I'm not going to get into too much detail. Outside the area near the loading dock, they want to complete the circular path around the school two weeks from now. I guess people must be asking about the lower area, the sidewalks surrounding the gym and the auto shop. They'll be done by mid next week. More sidewalks to follow surrounding the athletic fields. The varsity field's about 75% concrete curd. They're expecting the installation of the turf to start on or about November 10th. The work will start on the softball diamond immediately thereafter. Weather permitting, the process will begin all over again, but they will stop for the winter, and hopefully, mid-March, the turf will be placed for the upcoming softball season. But again, the process will go on for probably another year, closing it out and doing punch lists and resolving outstanding issues, but completion is within sight.
Thank you. Do you, either you, Mr. Wilson, or you, Mr. Pagola, want to add anything related to that, or do you feel like that was comprehensive? Great. Any questions related to the Building Committee's work? Great, none. Then we next have our minutes. As long as there is no objection, I would hear a motion to approve both the regular meeting minutes from September the 24th and the special meeting minutes from October the 9th. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Those minutes are approved. I would next to your motion, again, barring any objection, a single motion to approve, or sorry, to receive, the subcommittee meeting minutes for Facilities and Technology and Budget on September the 10th, School Improvement on September the 3rd, and the Building Committee on September the 18th.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion, edits, additions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Those are received. I will hear a motion to receive the consent agenda of appointments, retirements, and Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. That is done. All right. We're in the action part now. So we first have the forensic audit, RFP. You think that, but we added two executive sessions at the end of this thing. We'll first hear about the forensic audit, RFP, if Mr. Wilson, you would like to, oh, Ms. Labby, excuse me.
Yes, so at the last meeting, we had all received the packets of the three bidders that checked all the boxes. One stood out specifically CRI advisors. So they kind of checked the box of the price, the experience, and the reputation. So we visited, revisited to make sure there was no conflicts of interest, and everything looks good. So we, the superintendent and myself, are recommending that we award the contract to CRI advisors.
Are there any discussions, sorry, questions from members of the board related to that recommendation? Okay. Hearing none?
I'm sorry. Donna, the, for the CRI advisors, it looks as though their home base is in Florida. Do they, I thought, it appeared to me they had offices all over the country. Do they not, or are they just centralized in Florida?
That's a good question. They are based in Florida, but I asked if they would be coming to us, and they said absolutely, they will be coming to us.
Oh, okay.
And that's included in their quote.
Okay. You read my mind. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Hearing none. Let's start from the top then. I would hear a motion, if there is one, to accept the administration's recommendation and to authorize the superintendent to engage with CRI advisors for forensic audit services.
I think our attorneys are engaging their services.
Oh, that's right. That's right. So, excuse me, to authorize Shipman and Goodwin, attorneys for the Board of Education, to engage their services on our behalf.
So moved.
Is, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, so that's done. So, Mr. Wilson, if you could just inform Shipman and Goodwin that they are being enlisted to do that and that they have the go-ahead, we would appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, we next have the 26, 27 school year calendar. Who has that?
That would be me.
Okay.
I think it's a highlight, right? I mean, we're looking, looking forward to, obviously, next year. This calendar had been shared with all the union representatives, and their input was taken into consideration, and edits were made to the calendar that is presented in front of you this evening. We think that this calendar is a good calendar for both students and staff, and if Mother Nature is kind to us next year, the last day of school, which everyone is excited to know, would be June 11th, and if not, obviously, days after that, depending on Mother Nature. But the calendar in front of you represents all of the professional development, all of the necessary days, and obviously, appropriate vacations when needed. And we feel confident with the calendar presented in front of the board this evening.
So is February, you know, usually they get a little break in February, but it tends to come at the end of the week. Was there a thought behind making it the beginning of the week, or did it just not seem to matter because it's still a four-day break?
It, just because it was when the President's Day fell, we just piggybacked it a little bit.
Oh, I see, yeah. Okay, great. Okay. As long as there's no other questions, I will hear a motion to approve this calendar as it's presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that calendar is adopted. Also, if I had read a little further down, I would have seen the President's Day is why you booked into it that way, so that one's my fault. We have the West State Mechanical Contract Extension. Mr. Pagola, tell us about that.
So, West State Mechanical right now does our HVAC service, and I would like to extend their contract for a year, possibly two. They have, you know, been very good to us, very responsible, and at the time of the new building right now, you know, to put a, to put a bid out there for a new contract to include this is a little premature, just because we don't have the building fully under our control yet. And to understand the complexity of this building, I just, it would be a good idea to extend what they're doing for our other schools. Just, you know, this, this complex is still under warranty, so we really don't do much service to this building right now when it comes to mechanicals, because it's still under warranty, and that's, and that's something we're going to have to dig into a little bit more exactly when the end date ends it, because this, you know, the project has been done in phases, and the turnover rate was done along with that. So certain parts are, you know, again, are going to be turned over at a certain time when we're not responsible for them. So the idea was to continue the way we're going with West State under the same contract. They did make some very good, you know, cuts in it, obviously, because, because, you know, they're not doing the high school anymore, so they gave us a credit for that. They did keep their labor rates at the same, as has been for the last three years, four years, which was a, which is a home run. So that's kind of the overview of it.
And we are generally satisfied with them. I know, you know, I recall that at the beginning of their contract, we certainly were, but it's been a couple of years, we're satisfied with their work?
Yes, they respond very well.
Excellent. Any questions from Mr. Pagola related to that matter?
They are a great company. I mean, in Torrington, there aren't many companies that have the depth of knowledge of complicated systems. They're good. I'm not related in any way. I don't know them, but they are good.
I've never heard anything but good things, but I felt it was important to put it on the record when you give somebody a contract extension that you're happy with them. I will hear a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, Dean had mentioned that it's to extend it for one year, possibly for two. We passed it on saying a two-year extension if the labor rates were extended, the current labor rates were extended for two years. So we can't, we're voting to extend this contract. It can't be, well, maybe, maybe it'll be two later. It needs to be decided whether it's one or two years. And during our meeting, it was discussed where if they give us the same labor rates for two years, we'll accept a two-year extension.
So it was for, they offered for one year. I went back and told them that to let me know if they could do it for two years, and I haven't met with them again on that. So they can lock in for one year.
Okay.
But I didn't give me, he just didn't get a chance to go back and talk to Fran, who is the owner, and I haven't heard from him whether he would accept the same labor rate for the second year or not.
So I think then the move at this meeting would probably be to extend for one year. We can vote on an extension at any time, right? So if they're able to come back next month even and say, yeah, the second year, we can hold the labor rates, the board can, you know, can vote again to add that extra year. I don't believe there's any timeframe in which we're restricted from voting on an additional extension. It would be a little unorthodox, but it's not, to my understanding, prohibited for us to extend it twice, back-to-back. So I think.
Could we vote one year, but if they hold their rate, that we would vote tonight to extend it to two, to give them an incentive to act? I don't, it doesn't matter to me, but it might save another meeting, but I don't know if we can do that.
Yeah, I think we could.
Or you could give CRI the authority to.
Yeah, and I think the direction we're setting is clear and on the record, so.
You'll be gone, Susan.
Yeah. So what I would be seeking then is a motion to extend the West State Mechanical contract for one year and to authorize the board chairs and the administration to enter into an additional extension per the contract, provided the labor rates remain flat.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's done. That carries. We have tours of TMS THS. Oh, did I? Oop, I did. FAST Academy Credit for Work Experience. There is a document in front of us, yes. Who's taking that one up?
Sue and I could take this. This came up at the School Improvement Committee, and it's been talked about a couple of times. The kind of cliff notes on it is that the students would receive credit, if the board would allow, for work done outside, because that is ultimately, as we shared with the program, with the shortened day, to get them job experiences and things of that nature, and it would help them matriculate quicker. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into it, and Dr. Torres did a great job really researching and finding all of different documents and different examples, what schools, alternative schools do use. It's not just that we're giving away credits for ours. There's a lot more that goes to it, and those forms kind of outline what that is. So we're asking the board to approve that, so that we could put that into place for our students at FAST Academy.
Great. I do have a question. So structurally, I understand that, you know, the supervisor evaluates the student, et cetera. Is there also some kind of, if not requirement, then policy by which an administrator or counselor from FAST Academy would also speak to the employer, ideally, face-to-face, but even by telephone, on top of the written evaluation?
Yes, and Dr. Torres is here. If she wanted to add anything, Amanda, if you'd like, but yes, and I don't want to speak for her, but I know she's spoken with people across the state, as Michael just said, in various alternative programs, to kind of get the protocols that are followed for this type of thing. And yes, there would be that ongoing communication between the employer and the FAST Academy supervisors.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes these programs just end up sort of letting the employer write whatever they want, and everybody just rubber stamps the grade, and I didn't think that would happen here, but I thought it was important to put out there. Any other questions?
If you've established the right relationship with the employer, they will let you know if there's a problem.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I will, actually, what are we seeking? Are we seeking approval of the program, approval of the document?
Obtain the credit.
Okay, so how are we authorizing, I mean, would we vote on this almost as a curriculum class? What is the vote itself?
The vote would be that the board would be in agreement and allow credit for the work experience, so would allow through the superintendent, obviously, I would work closely with Dr. Torres, to award those credits, so that the students would, you would see that on the student transcript.
Okay, so we're approving the establishment of this program?
That's correct.
So that the students can, okay.
You can start.
Great. So I will hear a motion to approve the establishment of the FAST Academy Work Experience Program.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Chris and we're voting on the FAST Academy thing.
Yeah, I got it.
Fabulous. Then you're just in time. For all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Where did my agenda? Okay, now we have tours of TMS THS.
So I know this topic was put on. I know the Building Committee had some plans to do some tours, and I know that there was some discussion about that, because obviously, we are in the buildings, and we are here, and our students are here, and I think the tours should come from us, and I do think that it is inappropriate that we do offer a tour. I know the public is very interested in seeing this beautiful building, middle school, high school, central office included. So I think that the reason that it is on the agenda, and I don't want to speak for anyone, is because I think that should just be, I don't want to say governed, but it should be established and set up through central office, as opposed to a subcommittee of the Board of Education.
I agree, and I think that's why we added it. Sorry. It was brought to, sorry. It was brought to my attention that they're looking to have tours. There were a couple dates put out there, but I, to your point, Michael, I think it, we definitely have to accommodate the taxpayers that are, you know, helped pay for this building. And I think it's best for us to look at the best, the most appropriate time to do it, who, how to facilitate it. You know, we've already talked about not being able, people just coming in the building and wandering around. You know, we can't have that. But that was just to get it on your radar, to hopefully do it sooner than later. Once, once you're done with the middle school, it's probably your, your best bet, but definitely facilitated through you guys, through central office.
Certainly, and Dean and I have actually talked about this. You know, there are a lot of still unfinished areas, so our thought was, let's wait till it's finished, let's wait till it's done, so that the tour that can be given would be a great tour. And you're right, we cannot just have people wander the building. It has to be given in tour groups, if you will. Obviously, that's also for safety and security of everyone involved, and obviously, for safety and security of the building. We don't want anyone roaming the building and looking for things they shouldn't. So safety and security will be paramount during those tours.
And I think it's important to note that having everything done is beneficial as well, because we, why would you want to come and see a building if we're not 100% yet?
Exactly. For example, if the tour was tonight, we wouldn't be able to see our brand-new, beautiful gym.
Right.
So.
Great.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So is it your recommendation that the tours wait for even the outside portions to be complete, and this thing more towards the end of the school year in the summer?
I don't think that's necessary. I think we could probably do it, you know, somewhere in the end of November, December-ish timeframe. I think there'll be enough, the inside will be done at least, and the outside, seeing all of the fields, there is a great vantage point, I don't want to give it away, but in the middle school stairwell, Mr. Penny knows the vantage point, Mr. LaFreniere as well, that is actually my favorite spot to go and look at the new fields, and so, yes, you can see a lot. And when, you know, if the people are here for the tour, we can obviously walk out there, but we can also show them the bird's eye view as well.
Great. Anyone else?
I was going to ask.
You're first, then Ellen.
I was gonna ask-
You're first, then Ellen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're first, then Ellen.
We can't, I was thinking, can we do them on the Thanksgiving or Christmas break? But that means you have to bring other people in, so.
We would, on a holiday, if we were to use our staff, you're talking about double holiday, yeah.
Anyone out there want to make double time?
No, sorry. Sorry, kidding.
Ellen.
Will this also be in coordination with the Building Committee?
Yes, actually, this came up because Mario and Ed called me. That's where it came up, yeah.
Correct, because we were discussing it in the Building Committee.
You did.
We did, and we wanted to make sure that, because the building isn't the school's yet, it still belongs to the Building Committee.
One of them is, the high school is ours.
All right.
Yeah, and that's the tricky part, but that's why we want to do this.
Right, so in coordination, so that it's partners, yeah.
So I-
And they offered to, they also, they also offered to help, you know, with not necessarily security, but to help volunteer their time to, you know, facilitate and position people and things like that. So, yeah, that's important.
Right, right, absolutely. Great, thank you.
Great. I'm almost inclined to do this, I know this is specifically TMS-THS. I would almost be inclined to just take a vote, so that we never have to do this again, to allow the central office administrator, or actually, no, just the superintendent, to allow the superintendent, at his discretion, to provide for tours of Board of Education facilities in a manner consistent with the board's policies. Boom, done. That way, anybody, you want to see Forbes School or Fast Academy now? Come on by. Does that make sense to people? I think that way, we can just put this issue to bed.
You don't have to meet about it?
Yeah, anytime anyone wants to come into our buildings, whether it's a tour or something else, they just have to call the central office. So unless there's additional questions, I would hear a motion to that effect. Again, this would be to allow the superintendent to provide for visits to and tours of Board of Education facilities in line with the publicized policies of the board.
So moved.
Is there a second? One of you? Any discussion? Hearing none?
Yeah, if this board is deciding to do it, do it.
Sure, yep, that's fine. It would end up that way, anyway. So as long as the mover and secondary are fine with that?
I agree with that.
Great, so we'll reflect that change. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Extension, that carries. So I know, I think I ordered this wrong, because I forgot there's already an executive session, so it would be preferable to do all three executive sessions back-to-back. So if we could just briefly skip over the one that was in the printed agenda about Title IX, just so that we can do the last open discussion item related to the snow removal contract. Just that way, we only have to do executive session once. Anybody who has trouble getting around doesn't have to walk back and forth, which is easier for everybody.
Just looking for information, it looks like the snow removal contract had gone out to bid in the past week, and we still have an open contract now. If you guys can just elaborate on us, with us, as to what's going on.
Yes, so we went out to bid, and we are having, we had a pre-bid meeting today, and we're gonna have another one tomorrow, both Zoom meeting and live. They can come to the office just to go over some details. You know, most guys use Google Maps to plot out what the properties look like, but unfortunately, our Google Maps isn't up to speed here, so I do have some drone shots of the building, and we've outlined them, so that they can see that in person.
Yeah, that went out in addendums, in addendums today. I see that, but what's going on with the current contract?
Current contract, he is out. I'll let Donna elaborate.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's up to date here.
Hold on, Susan.
Yeah, you just said that he's out, like it's been terminated by the current vendor.
We received, we received a letter from a lawyer saying that they wanted out of the contract, because the scope was outside of the original contracted RFP. So they are trying to get out of the contract.
Is that all they're trying to do, is get out of the contract?
Yes.
Okay, so how much is the scope changing? Can they get out of it based upon their, because they're technically on the hook for another year at their current price.
So I can answer that. You're not wrong, Glenn. It came down to, while they want out of the contract, there is contract language that does allow them to leave us. We could dispute that contract language, however, with the facts that they wanted out and the facts of a cost analysis from an attorney perspective, we made the executive decision to bring it to the board, to go out to bid, and to get another company, as opposed to try to hold this particular company, who does not want to partner with us anymore, and, you know, is afraid of the scope of the work, whether they can do it or not, especially with the size of this new building. So that is the reason that Dean and Donna drafted the RFP and went out to the RFP process. But they do have language that they can escape their liability for the last year. Yes, we could probably go to our attorneys and fight that, but at that point, we were between a rock and a hard place, and we thought it would be beneficial to not spend the money on legal and to try to go out to bid and get someone who really wants to work with Team Torrington.
And when was that letter received, that they wanted out?
That's October 10th.
Okay.
Is it a 30-day exit? Right, like when you notify the other party in writing, is it 30 days?
I believe so, yeah.
Our side of that contract says we can give 30 days' notice. Their side's a little bit less clear.
Okay.
If it was 30 days, that contract, I believe, was not up until November 1st of 2026.
And what's, what's the name of the current vendor?
Gibson, oop, there you go. Gibson Snow Removal, Gibson Landscaping, I believe it is.
The new company.
Right.
They did a great job when they, they were first starting off last year.
Great. Anyone have any other questions? So just-
So did we send a letter that, yes, their contract is terminated?
No, we have not.
Because I believe their first payment is due November 1, I believe. So if their letter was October 10th, 30 days is November 10th, are they gonna expect one payment, November 1?
We did try to push back, but their attorney said that there was a material amount that would, and they quoted state legislation, that that removes them from the obligation. So that was the last communication, was their attorney saying, we have enough to go out of the contract.
Great, but what Glenn's asking is, are we gonna write them a check on the first?
Yeah.
They don't want any money, right?
No, we're not, we're not making, we're parting ways.
Okay, so.
I just want a clarification. Things that go out the bed, don't they normally come through the board first?
I can't hear, say it again?
Normally, when we have a bid process, RFP, RFQ, normally that information flows through the committee, goes, flows through the board prior. Was there extenuating circumstances why that was not done?
Based on the fact that, you know, obviously, no one knows, you know, there have been storms on Halloween before, and the fact that October 10th was pretty quick, and obviously, Dean is concerned, as he should be, as the Director of Facilities. We wanted to obviously make the board aware that we have an RFP. There was no one chosen, no one has been chosen. The board will make that decision. But however, we wanted to get that process started as quickly as possible, due to that extenuating circumstance, that we were without a contractor in the case of snow removal.
I have to, let me take over for a second, Glenn, because was the board notified if this went out? Because I don't recall seeing anything. Okay, and when did it go out to bid?
Last, October 10th, so we got it out quickly by, I think it was out last Thursday. So we got, had about a week, weeks' time after we got the letter. We went back and forth a little bit with, you know, Gibson, we got their letter, it came back, and we had it out to bid before the response.
Okay, and is the scope of the bid spec significantly different? Because it sounds like, I'm just putting things together here.
Yep.
Right, their reason for wanting to exit the contract is that they believe the scope of work has changed, and it sounds like we can see that it may have. And so is the bid spec substantially different than the one under which the current contract was bid?
Yes.
Okay. I have thoughts about this, but I'm gonna, yes.
In case the information is useful, the legal notice was in Saturday's Waterbury paper, just, you know, for your information.
Of course, and the legal notice is legally sufficient. I'm not saying anyone's, yeah.
Saturday, we offered a previous name.
I just think that it's important that the board be apprised of this sort of thing, even just via email, because, you know, this, this sort of thing is materially at the board's discretion. The board may have been interested in contesting Gibson's exit from this contract. I doubt it, but it could have been. The board also could have been interested in playing a role in crafting the bid specification and voting to approve it, as it customarily does, and as it is, I believe, required to do. So I, this is distressing. I'm trying to be as mild-mannered as I can, but I am very upset that this has happened, and I will leave it at that for now. Does anyone else have anything? Gary?
I do this all the time. I don't know what we'd be distressed about. I don't think anybody on this board is qualified to put a bid spec together, and the amount of time they had after negotiating, we can do, and I'm not dismissing that, well, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it tonight. That's the only thing we need to need, need to see. I mean, the bid spec is insignificant.
Not real now.
Oh, I thought you just said we're-
We have a bid.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, but we are gonna see the bids. Right, so.
Yes, under a bid spec that the board didn't vote to approve.
But again, what would you approve?
We always see them, and we always vote to send them out to bid.
Unless it's, if it snowed this week, then you'd blame everybody else for not having it.
Gibson is still under contract until the 9th.
You can-
He's under contract.
Great, but he's not gonna, he's not gonna show up. He's a six-man outfit.
Well, then we go after him and we sue him.
You, you'll be taking his truck. See, I understand what you're saying, but I deal with this all the time. He has no assets. So what are you gonna do, spend it?
That's the point I was, trying to, is that the board needs to be involved in these types of decisions.
Well, we are moving forward.
This is our actual prerogative. We talk a lot about what the board's prerogative is in terms of management of this school district. This is our prerogative.
But what is the prerogative?
Contracts, budgets, expending money for vendors, approving bid specifications, that is our actual bona fide prerogative, and I will not give it up.
I understand, but, well, then, fine. Then they can start giving us five days to review, then we have other meetings. But if it snows, what do we do? I mean, certain things matter, and if you know, and I know who this is, they have no, they have six trucks. You can sue all you want, they're not gonna, you're not gonna get a penny.
I'm not saying we're gonna sue them, Gary, that's not, I'm just saying the point of the matter-
I'm saying you can't force them to show up.
The point of the matter is, the board should have been apprised and not read about it in the newspaper, or gotten a random email from someone making the bid. That's the problem.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm saying to be distressed, given these circumstances, I'm just thinking, I wouldn't be so distressed, because it may have saved us a lawsuit if it did snow, and none of the parking lots were plowed. I mean, there are certain things that happen in construction, and again, them, Dean being from construction, he probably thinks that way, and maybe it should have been done, but I'm saying I wouldn't be so distressed, given the circumstances, because we couldn't do anything other than if we wanted to review the bid spec, two, three weeks to review it? Who's gonna, you know, maybe Glenn could, I could, but I'm not gonna go through a bid spec, because I'm not a lawyer. And a bid spec usually matches some legal requirements for the bid. So we may have gone a month without having the opportunity to hire somebody. That's all I'm saying.
It doesn't take us that long to do. We've done, we do it consistently with every other, every other decision and contract we make, we put out to bid, and we do it expeditiously to the extent we can. I don't think anybody would have directed, would have dragged this out for months, knowing that snow season is among us. The point isn't, I think you're missing the point, period, process, or procedure, policy, that's all.
I'm not disagreeing. I said simply in these, in this case, I wouldn't be so distressed, because it was the, the opportunity to get a bid in before it gets real cold may have been the most important decision to be made. But outside of that, yes, process has to be followed, but it's never followed 105% of the time. That's all I'm saying. All I'm saying, I wouldn't be so distressed, and I could be distressed. I'm just trying to point out the, what actually could have happened, the risk we would have been taking, and maybe, in my case, you can say, no, I've been through it. I've not, I've not gotten bids and cleared parking lots, and I've been sued, you know, in a matter of one night. So I always look at the worst possible outcome, when the monies could be not, you know, significant amount. It's just my opinion, it's just my opinion.
All right, Mr. Putnam first, then Mr. Kisco.
Everybody's getting pretty, pretty riled up over the snow plowing contract. I guess I would just say that maybe this would have, we talk about optics in the district a lot. The optics of this may have been better if in our board packet tonight and on the agenda it happened to have said, hey, we have a snow plowing contract to look at, and the attached bid spec was in it. That probably would have gone a long way to, you know, preventing some of these issues. Not that we shouldn't have the process, but I think some of the heated exchange over this might have been diminished if it was brought to us, rather than us coming to you saying, hey, why do we still not know about this, even though we've seen it in the paper?
Understood.
Yeah, and I, look, as the people who set the agenda, I would tell you that it absolutely would have been there if I had found out about this any sooner than by a telephone call from Mr. Berger a little earlier today. Mr. Kisco.
We are a public entity, and what a private entity can do in the process of running its business is very different from the imposition of policy and law on us, and we need to be aware of that. So you are entirely correct in being distressed at the process not being followed. I agree, I should say, I agree.
I think, so I think what has to happen, more than anything, is there needs to be, and I would task the superintendent with this, a review of the board's policies and procedures to ensure that there actually is the allowance, first off, because your basis is that this is effectively an emergency. So there needs to be a review of the policy to ensure that the superintendent can take these kinds of actions in an emergency, and if so, what is the procedure for notifying the board? Because-
That we can answer, we already know we can.
Right, but, right, how much money, what qualifies as an emergency, and then, again, what's the timeline for notifying the board? Because I, that part offends me more than it does concern me.
And I apologize, that's not the intent here. So when Dean and Donna had came to me with this news, we did enact the emergency clause. At no point were we gonna enter into a contract without the board reviewing it. The monetary aspect is 100% the board's responsibility. To Mr. Kisco's point, that is exactly why we're public and not private. If, and to Gary's point, if at that time, when the bids are open and reviewed, if someone does not like either the price or what the specs were, we can 100% go out to bid again. However, we would never enter into a contract, even though, yes, under emergency circumstances, there is a dollar amount that the superintendent has the right to do. Excuse me. I would not enter into a contract without the board. This was just to expedite the process, so that we can get companies to bid for the snow plowing. The board will have 100% review of those bids and which company to go with, obviously based on references, price, and obviously Dean's recommendation, because he will be reviewing it with the board. So I understand, and I apologize if anyone is taking it that way, that was not the intent. The intent was just to enact the emergency, because on October 10th, when our current company said they don't want to do it, and obviously, legal to go back and forth, it was the executive decision to go out to bid for a company that wants to work with the team, but at no point were we gonna enter into a contract with another company without the board. That was never gonna happen, nor will happen.
So what was the basis for the emergency?
The fact that in previous years, I believe it was Dean's actually second year on the job, we actually had an ice storm in the middle of October, where we needed sand and salt, and Dean came to me, and he could speak for himself, I don't have to speak for him. He said, you know, boss? He said, it's getting colder. He goes, we had snowstorms in October, my first year, we had a big ice storm, what are we gonna do? And that was the decision, to go out just to get reputable companies to come in and bid. And as I said, no money was going to exchange hands without the board, not at all.
And, yeah, will you please send everybody on this board the bid specification and RFP that went out?
100%. Dean will do that tomorrow.
Great. Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, just one thing. What was, what was different in the scope of work where they wanted to back out?
So their original contract included the old high school, the way it was. In the process of the last two years, now, I just, just wanna remind you too that their bid was considerably cheaper than the next guy.
A lot cheaper?
Yeah, considerably less money than the next guy. So what changed so far was, there's been probably three scopes of change. The, the temporary lot during construction was a change, and then when the, when the high school became available to us last January was another change in the contract right there. And they came to us with a number, they gave us a number on, on what it was to change. So we, we went through that, we, we left it open. We say, hey, listen, come, come August summertime, there's even gonna be more changes going on here in the scope, so we need to communicate. And I really didn't hear from them until October 10th. You know, I probably should have called them during the middle of summer to say, hey, listen, by the way, you know, we have to go over this new layout because it's a brand-new building, brand-new complex. So their original bid was nothing to do with the new school, even though ground was broken at that point, because it was, what, three years ago? So there was, there was some construction here, but there was nothing to, I guess, identify as well as we could today with the new scope of work of what it looks like and what the job is.
So was the original contract amended?
There was, the original contract was amended.
And we have copies of that amendment where?
In the office.
It's, it's not on, it's not under the contract section that has the original bid? There's amendments that aren't posted with that bid?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And was anybody in this committee aware of amendments to the snow contract?
No.
No.
Well, I, it, it would have been, and I don't know what the policy would be, but either you get the amendment as fast as you can, given the fact that some of those things were added within a matter of days.
Yeah, but if the contract value changes, we should be informed as well. Just like if we go out to bid now and we know it's maybe significantly higher, that was not budgeted for this year.
I'm not, I'm not dismissing that. I think you probably...
Okay, so this, you know, there are implications that we need to have further thinking about.
I agree with you. I thought you meant trying to get the bid out for the amendment, because...
No, 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 no.
That's what I thought you meant.
Prior, the original contract was amended without our knowledge.
Yeah, I thought you meant trying to get it out for a bid. That's all.
Okay.
More to come, I think, on this one, unless anyone else has anything to add, because I am now additionally interested in the fact that the contract was amended with neither the board's vote nor its review.
We talked, I want, just one, real quick. We did talk about last year when the new, when we were moving into the, when we were moving into the building. All right, when we were moving into the building, we did have conversations when the high school was coming over in January because they had to take on that extra. I know we talked about it, and I don't recall if it was in a subcommittee meeting or a board meeting, but it was discussed, I, again, don't recall the details, Marissa might be able to pull up the meeting. Sorry, no pressure, you could even send it to us if you find, or when you find it, but I know we had conversations about it. I don't remember the exact details, it might have been a subcommittee meeting, of facilities...
I think Marissa sends out really serious...
Yeah, she probably will. But there was some discussion, to the extent it went after that, I don't recall, but I know they did bring it to our attention that Gibson was looking for, yeah, for more money because of the change in the contract conditions.
And was, was the board ever informed either in a recorded or minuteed meeting or in writing of the effective dollar amount change to that contract, or was it just added to the budget?
I don't recall that meeting. I know it was discussed at the facility subcommittee meeting. I don't recall.
I don't remember what day it was discussed.
Mr. Knight? Mr. Kisco will set you up with the microphone, tell you when you're ready.
Okay. It may, it may have come up in some subcommittee, but I don't recall it, it, this, this issue of, of the contract or amended contract ever, ever coming to the floor, board.
That's my recollection as well, for what it may be worth. Mr. Knight? Mr. Putnam?
I do recall that some of the contracts Dean did bring to us, there was a change in the landscaping contract, we spoke about those. Look, I don't think any of this is, nobody thinks this is malicious, this is just something we need to, we just, well, I honestly think it was malicious, I think we need to clean it up, though. Obviously, everybody needs to get on the same page so that we're, you know, following the procedures and keeping us, you know, all on track. So I look forward to seeing the RFI, RFQ.
One more thing. We agree. I mean, it's, it's, somebody talked about getting out of control or heated. It's not about heated. It's talking about it practically, and then, and when you say things like stressed and all those things, and it makes it sound like, you know, it was malicious, and, and it's not malicious. It's common sense, and whether it's public or private, you do things sometimes that make enough sense to avoid having something worse happening, and if it means an attachment shown, show the attachment. Ask for it, and simply say, let's try to do better at this. Not, not what seemed like attacks, which is, to me, is, is just silly. But not, I understand what you're saying, but let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Igledo. I just wanted to be clear to everyone that I choose my words quite intentionally, and distressed is the gentlest way that I could describe this, and with, so, right, so are we generally, for now, concluded with this matter? Okay, so the board will receive these documents to review, the board should, will consider this matter further at a later date. Now, we have executive sessions after all that. So we have next a possible executive session on discussion concerning an attorney-client privileged communication regarding CIAC regulations and Title IX compliance. Is there a motion to enter executive session inviting in the superintendent?
Second.
Well, we'll do them back to back. There was a motion in the second. We'll invite Ms. Schulte as well. That's what I was looking for. Any discussion? Hearing in all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? We are in executive session at 7:22. The board will step out for everyone's sake.
Down. Um, we are back in open session at 7:37 PM. We have next possible executive session regarding a discussion and possible action on a personnel contract. Is there a motion to enter executive session inviting in the superintendent and just the superintendent?
Right.
Uh, all those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? We are in executive session again at 7:37.
All right, we are in open session at 8:11 PM. So we have three items which may necessitate action. Actually, one of them doesn't. So in order, the item number six regarding attorney-client privilege, C I A C Title IX, etc., necessitates no action nor does the agenda call for it. We next have an executive session that was regarding a discussion and possible action on a personnel contract. So I would hear a motion if there is one to amend the discussed personnel contract in accordance with the board's discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? How many? One, two, anyone else? Raise your hands, I just want to make sure we get the count right. Okay. Any abstentions? Okay, so that carries. We next have a possible action on an M O U with the T E A. In line with our discussion, is there a motion to table that matter for future consideration? Okay, motion is to table as far as I know, may not require a vote, but let's take one just to be sure. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that item is tabled indefinitely for possible future discussion. We next have items for the upcoming agenda. I assume we'll have snow removal contract. We'll have the normal budget fair, committee reports. Hopefully by then, we'll also be able to say that all of the internal workings of this facility have been turned over to us. Hopefully, fingers crossed. Who knows what else we'll have? Anyone else have anything? Lots of stuff, I'm sure. Comments for the good of the order? Mr. Cronin? Mr. Knight? Mr. Kisco? Mr. Ukuleto? Mr. Ukuleto? Ms. Conway?
Great meeting, thank you. I'll do Alan tonight. No. So Alan, I just want to thank you. You were one of the very first ones to welcome me here. I think I've been good. So thank you. I'm going to try and stop you. I really wish that you enjoy your retirement so much. And so, I mean, great news.
Mr. Putnam?
Thank you. I feel a lot of those sentiments for both of the folks who are leading for us is coming to lunch. We appreciate having you guys here, how you brought to us. How much passion you keep me going off to be back sometimes. So I appreciate a little nudge on your panel.
Ellen?
Yeah. Just thank you everyone.
Of course. Glenn?
Thank you for being here, Ellen. I love playing footsies with you. All right. Good meeting.
Great meeting, and Ellen, thank you. To echo what Kristen said, I learned so much from you. Early days in the board and just the little notes across the table or the shh, or you know, little things here and there. You were very, very helpful and you've just been a pleasure to work with. So congratulations to both of us.
Ms. Vines?
Thank you. And thank you both for serving.
Same thing, great meeting and thank you, Ellen. As I said to you before, you know, you've been on the board since I've been here. So I really do appreciate all of your support over the many years. And Sue, it has been a pleasure working with you in many capacities. So thank you so much for everything and for your leadership and I'll miss you both. Thank you, thank you everyone.
Sue?
Thank you very much, Sue and Ellen, for all of your years of service.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you again, Ellen and Sue. It's been a pleasure. I know there's more good things for all, both of you to come and I know you'll always keep in touch. Sue, you will miss the million phone calls, I think, but I know it. I thank you for your dedication, both of you. Thank you.
As far as I know, this is not Ellen's last meeting. She's not allowed to skip the last one.
So we have three items which may necessitate action. Actually, one of them doesn't. So in order, the item number six regarding attorney-client privilege, C I A C Title IX, et cetera, necessitates no action nor does the agenda call for it. We next have an executive session that was regarding a discussion and possible action on a personnel contract. So I would hear a motion, if there is one, to amend the discussed personnel contract in accordance with the board's discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? How many? One, two, anyone else? Raise your hands. I just want to make sure we get the count right. Okay. Any abstentions? Okay, so that carries. We next have a possible action on an M O U with the T E A. In line with our discussion, is there a motion to table that matter for future consideration? Okay, motion is to table as far as I know, may not require a vote, but let's take one just to be sure. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item is tabled indefinitely for possible future discussion. We next have items for the upcoming agenda. I assume we'll have snow removal contract. We'll have the normal budget fair and committee reports. Hopefully by then, we'll also be able to say that the, all of the internal workings of this facility have been turned over to us. Hopefully, fingers crossed. Who knows what else we'll have? Anyone else have anything? Lots of stuff, I'm sure. Comments for the good of the order? Mr. Cronin? Mr. Knight? Mr. Kisco? Mr. Ukuleto? Mr. Ukuleto? Ms. Conway?
Great meeting, thank you. Thank you, Ellen. No. So, Ellen, I just want to thank you. You're one of the very first ones to welcome me here. I think I've done the best thing I've ever done. That's okay, though. I think I've been good. So, thank you. I've gone to try and talk to you. I really wish that you enjoy your retirement, so to speak. And, um, so, kind of, you're the greatest.
Mr. Putnam?
Good meeting. I took a lot of those sentiments for both of the folks who are leaving for us this coming lunch. We appreciate having you guys here and all you've brought to us. How much pleasure you keep me going off to be back sometimes. So, I appreciate a little nudge under your head.
Ellen?
Yeah? Yeah. Just thank you, everyone. Kind words.
Of course. Go ahead.
Thank you for being here, Ellen. I love playing footsies with you. All right. Good meeting.
Two.
Great meeting, and Ellen, thank you. To echo what Kristin said, I learned so much from you, early days in the board, and just the little notes across the table or the, or, you know, little things here and there. You were very, very helpful, and you've just been a pleasure to work with. So, congratulations to both of us.
Ms. Vines?
Thank you.
Dee.
Who's next?
Great meeting, and I'm going to miss you, Ellen. Thank you for being a kind guy to me in my first year doing the Budget Committee. And, and thank you also, Sue.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker?
Thank you, and thank you both for serving.
Kim.
Same thing, great meeting, and thank you, Ellen. As I said to you before, you know, you've been on the board since I've been here, so I really do appreciate all of your support over the many years. And Sue, it has been a pleasure working with you in many capacities. So, thank you so much for everything and for your leadership, and I'll miss you both. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Sue.
Thank you very much, Sue and Ellen, for all of your years of service.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you again, Ellen and Sue. It's been a pleasure. I know there's more good things for all both of you to come, and I know you'll always keep in touch. Sue, you will miss the million phone calls, I think, but I know it, I thank you for your dedication, both of you. Thank you.
As, as far as I know, this is not Ellen's last meeting. She's not allowed to skip the last one. That'd be funny. So I will save it, especially because Carrie said most of what I would say far better than I would say it. But I have heard a rumor that it is in fact Sue's last meeting, and that she intends to abandon us in November. So, yeah, so I, I also know you don't like the spotlight, so I will simply say that it has been my distinct privilege to serve as co-chair of this board alongside you, and that you are a pillar of this community, not only for your involvement here, but in so many other institutions of this city. Really, you are an institution in this city. And I will stop there, but Kristin wanted to add some words on your behalf. Did you want to say anything?
No, I'll send you one.
Okay. Sue has selected not to add anything further.
Thank you very much.
So, we just have future meetings, they're all posted, there's five of them, it's on the agenda. Find it online. I'll hear a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.